This time you do have one person sign up for public comment. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and address and you will have five minutes to speak. I have Carol Stotts.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Carol Stotts, three five two Lost Lake Drive, Divide, Colorado. Just wanted to come up and just thank you as a council for your support at the fair this last week. It was really great to see everybody out there. Missy was out watching the show. Cody was out supporting the auction. Annie was watching the events and she came out and was there with the commissioners when they did the dedication and the rising of the flag. I know Bruce was out there helping with the PK department. So Newmont was out there supporting the kids in there in the room. So I just wanted to say thank you. It was really nice to see such a presence from our local city council. Thank you.
Once I told others, the sunburn was worth it. It was a great event, so thank you for that. Okay, moving on to approval of meeting minutes from the July seventeen twenty twenty four Kibble Creek City Council regular meeting and the July twenty six twenty twenty four special meeting. Um, the special meeting was a Tuesday, their planning meeting, just so you're aware. Um, I did find one very small typo. Um, on the first page towards the very bottom. Um, it says the cost will be five comma zero zero per year after the initial setup. There should just be one more zero because that's all I saw. Um, is council had an opportunity to review the minutes? Any changes or revisions needed? All right, can I get a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from there. When was it seventeen ten million?
Twenty six.
Twenty six. Minus three.
All right, go please. Allison Bowman.
Yes.
Allison Shaw.
Yes.
Mary. Yes, Mayor, please.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Mayor, it seems like you're going along the red minutes, so just highly alert. Pay attention to those details. What's zero, right? All right.
Okay, um, report, city administrator. Bring us over.
I just appreciate the council's vision there and strategic planning session. It was so long ago, but it goes very good officials. Thanks.
All right, next up, finance director, Monet Edwards.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Durham and council members. This evening I would like to report on June's gaming industry numbers. Statewide, the industry's AGP was down five point nine nine billion dollars. Kibble Creek's AGP was down nine hundred and forty thousand dollars or five point eight percent. Compared to June of twenty twenty three, the Kibble Creek's main indicators were up. Coin in and table drop were at ten point eight percent and AGP was up eight point nine percent. Purple Creek's market share remained unchanged at six point four percent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we do have a presentation, the Newmont Mine Quarterly Update.
Mayor Durham and council members, good evening. Just a reminder, my name is Yon from Houston. Um, the general manager at Newmont. Of previous meeting on Austin, that's too difficult to remember. So I don't have a public name like that, but you can probably remember my Starbucks name, which is Char. Right, presentation. So, um, you may recall at the previous meeting, we were briefed about taking on uh, actually there were questions around the divestiture for Newmont. Um, what's CCNB from Newmont? So I will start with that and then between Katie Caitlin and Hunter, they will update you on some of the other items that we are future for, for the, for you as our host community. So you can move on to the next slide. So. Oh, they mean move on to the next slide. Yep. Since this is my other slide, then we might use this again. So, um, so, um, you may recall that I mentioned that in November, we purchased the company Newcrest that increased Newmont's operation, operations by five, who were already twelve operations. And at the moment we are seventeen and that is really, it's too much for our structure, it's too much for our capital allocation framework. So, um, our board and executives have made the decision um, that they would evaluate some of our, or all our mines and identify based on a set of criteria. Um, those mines that they would want to divest. Um, the operations that we are maintaining are called tier one operations. And really those are operations with one life, ten years plus. Um, that produce more than five hundred thousand ounces a year. Um, and, um, that run at the, at the certain cost profile. And unfortunately, there were six operations that did not fail in that class, of which CCNB is one. Just as an, as a comparison, we produce in the region of hundred seventy thousand ounces. Um, this is the five hundred thousand ounces. The other operations are in Canada, three of them, one in Ghana and in one in Australia. Now, if those operations have been removed, what you see there up on the screen uh, is what will remain of the Newmont operations. Um, eleven that we directly manage and then a number more that we are in joint venture with um, with electric operations. And those are operations that we feel we want to continue to invest capital in. Uh, that does not mean that Kipple Creek is, uh, not a good mine. There is still a lot of gold out there, but our capital is better invested elsewhere. Somebody else would come and invest and still make a longer future from this mine. You will also see that we talk about world-class copper gold projects. And you're all aware that we are moving to a net zero economy, or that's the plan. Um, and if you want to achieve that by twenty thirty five, we need to produce double the amount of copper that we are currently producing. That is as the world and we are way behind on that. So that creates an opportunity for Newmont. And there are quite a number of, um, copper operations out there, sorry, copper projects that we will continue to invest in and develop. Um, those include, um, Red Cross Lockhead operation up in Canada's Golden Triangle. Um, uh, Wafi Gold mining, uh, Papua New Guinea. And then also you're going to purchase our parts in Peru, um, the Golar Creek project and Nuevo Union and not after each, each other. So that's really where our, um, money will be going. So where do we stand currently with the divestment process? Uh, last time I also told you that we were going through a stage process. Um, stage one was that scope, even which we initially opened our books to a limited extent to companies that would be interested, providing them the opportunity to evaluate our operations and evaluate our own business plans. At the end of that stage, which actually ended at the end of June, we will go into stage two. Um, in this stage, we would evaluate offers and, um, identify which are serious offers. Out of those, we will then identify which operations or which, um, companies rather, uh, we would not be prepared to sell to. Because we would not just sell to anybody, I also said that last time. But it will have to be people with, um, our, the same standards, um, and the same values that we as Newmont operate. So at the end of that, we have now ended up at a number of operations that, um, we will progress with. The next step is meetings to remind those meetings, uh, or rather visits to remind, which comprises of a presentation by ourselves and then visit, a visit to the site to look at things and see what the condition is and, you know, if we're trying to hide anything, whatever. And at the end of that process, they will then come up with a formal offer. Um, if there is an offer that is acceptable, of course, we will proceed with that. Uh, if not, there may be a negotiation phase to understand, um, what, what people's concerns are. But we hope to have this process completed by the end of the year. And then depending on the permitting processes and other regulatory processes, um, sorry, not permitting, the regulatory processes, um, and over the mine to be operated early. So that is where we currently stand with the divestiture. It is an interesting time for our operation. Um, you can imagine we're we're not divorced yet, we're towards a divorce. We sort of almost separated from bed and table, or we keep moving forward towards that. Um, as we, um, set up the systems via standalone operations separate from, from the corporate support structure. So that is what we are currently working on. And then also, uh, of course, um, we have high turnover of people that are concerned about losing their jobs. Um, so we are constantly, um, engaging and employing, uh, new people, um, to help us at the operations. But I guess those are the two major things that we are dealing with as an operation. In the meantime, we'll continue with our operations, mostly also memoir, I would say. Um, and, uh, luckily, I must say, in a, in a safe manner, we have, it's a long process with that any, any genie set on. So that's where we stand. Any questions on that before I hand that over to the panel?
Just one question, so you said, so you're done with the phase one, um, for, so phase two, you're in that phase now. Is that what it's bringing to already done?
Starting first of August, which continue approximately until the end of September or October with the decision you might worry enough.
So what happens at the end of the year, if you have, there's nobody, it's gonna, you don't want, or you don't want anybody to do, be still doing operations?
Yeah, so I mean, two thousand one outcomes, the one is, uh, we talked through it and found out why, because now we have a number on the hook. And, you know, if they, if they're not interested, we want to know why, what's, what's preventing them from progressing in the process? Um, if after that, we still do not come right, we will just continue. We still have, um, current approved life of mine of almost ten years left. During the process of trying to extend that, so we will still have a bit of, bit of life out there on the empty waters.
Thank you.
So keep it moving.
Um, good evening, council, Katie Blake, Sustainability and External Relations Manager at CCNB. Nice to see you all tonight. I think I can figure it out. All right. So this slide probably looks familiar, um, but just to provide you with an update, so, um, as I stated in last several, um, updates, uh, every year we aim to complete some concurrent reclamation across the site. And, um, basically the goal of that concurrent reclamation is to stabilize and reestablish effective plans to pre-mining land uses of wildlife habitat and livestock grazing. Um, really, the goal, uh, uh, of this concurrent reclamation is to ensure long-term stability and meet community expectations. Um, we trial these processes with our current, current reclamation to make sure that our plans are actually going to work when it comes time to close a mine site. Um, so the photo shown here is Ecoset, where East Crescent, Overbridge, and Sturge area on the northeast end of the property. Uh, so since twenty twenty, we reclaimed approximately seventy acres of that facility. Um, and really what happened there is some of the reclaimed areas, we had some pretty serious storms over the last several wancin seasons, and there was some significant erosion that took place there. So lesson learned, we needed better, more robust stormwater controls in place. Um, we went back in, installed those stormwater controls, and then we reapplied the top soil uh, and reseeded the area. And you'll see when you drive by today, there's some nice green vegetation that's popping up on that facility. Um, so hopefully this time around, we'll see some, some long-term stability and success there. Um, but really, that's the whole purpose of concurrent reclamation is so that we can trial some of these practices before it comes time to actually close a mine and make sure that they're real, it's looking successful. Um, so looking forward, we are planning to continue to reclaim additional areas. This year, we are looking to design some test plots. Um, and then execute those either late this year or early next year. Um, and what the test plots will do is basically trial, uh, different, uh, different depths of topsoil and different types of topsoil, as well as different types of seeding variations, uh, to see what delivers the, the best ability, long-term closure. And this leads into, um, our long-term site-wide closure study to inform those plans and make adjustments um, to make sure that closure is successful when it comes time for that. And when changes to the closure studies will have to be permitted through both the state and the county um, through formal processes. So everybody in here will have an opportunity, uh, for public comment period, showing me if those changes need to take place. Any questions on?
So the, the pit, I call it, uh, the camera on, on, is on a grassy valley side on the other side of the mountain. Is it, are you done on that side or is there going to be any more? Anything else going on over there?
Uh, I, I'll never say ever, especially, uh, potentially, you know, with a, a new operator coming into the picture. We might, you know, want to change plans completely. But at this point, there is nothing permitted to, to continue to be mined over on that side, the property.
Just forgive my ignorance, but if we have a new operator commit, as far as the reclamation plan is concerned, do they adopt that?
Yes.
Okay.
So the way it would work is we'd have to go through a formal process with the state. Um, I assume there's a similar process with the county, although I'm not as familiar with their processes. We're working with them, um, to formalize it, but essentially, um, the LLC, which is the, the mine site, will be transferred to the new operator and owner. And all of the permits that are held, uh, by the LLC will transfer to that. Um, another update, um, you may have noticed some of these, uh, these fancy structures on the site. Um, in December of last year, we completed two wildlife escape ramps. So these are escape ramps that are similar to the ones that you see along the three five. Um, and really what they do is allow wildlife to have, uh, a safe escape way um, from the fencing areas on, on the mine site. The fencing areas are supposed to keep wildlife out, but as we all know, I'm living here, uh, they find a way in. Um, so we frequently have been able to, or have had to go out, um, and kind of, you know, herd elk, deer, whatever it may be, out to gates and let them out that way. And it just is sort of a nuisance to our employees and also presents some health risks and it stresses out the animals. So we constructed these in hopes of, um, the animals using those escape ramps. Um, we'll see if we, if they, if they use them, use the upcoming season. Um, so far, I haven't heard of any real use. Um, but just so you know, when you see these around the mine site, um, that's what they are. And then we plan to construct additional wildlife fencing, including, uh, escape ramps uh, around or surrounding the OF one, so at the southwest end of the property, sort of by the, the bridge, uh, connecting to Victor. Um, that is in construction through the end of this year and beginning of next year. Um, and then at that point, the, the whole property will be fully fenced off with the exception of some areas that, you know, are not possible to be fenced.
I'll be curious to learn if it is a being affected.
Yeah, me too. Hopefully. Um, so moving on to talking about the future of the mine, so I think we went over a version of this slide, um, the last one round. Um, really, nothing has changed other than, um, we had recently submitted the application the last time we spoke. Um, since that time, the regulators deemed that application incomplete. Um, there were some updated land ownership and lease records that needed to be, um, most updated and submitted to the state. So we're, we're in the process of gathering that documentation and submitting that. And then at that point in time, um, the state will hopefully, knock on wood, deem the application complete. And then at that point, it will go out for a public comment period. Um, and there's notices that are required to be made in newspapers, um, as well as other areas where we have to notify the public that the public comment period has begun. Um, it's a thirty day period. Um, and then from there, um, we'll go back and forth collaborating with the state to address any public comments before they move into their review. From there, what happens is we'll have some back and forth with the state to clarify questions, maybe make adjustments to designs. Um, and then after that, um, hopefully approval from the state. And then the next step in the process is moving into Teller County application review and approval. There's also public comment periods as well as public hearings as part of that process. And Tyler County is really focused on things like view shed, um, lighting, um, noise pollution, potentially uh, dust, things that, you know, are more of a concern to the communities and yourselves, at least from a perspective. Um, so just so you understand how that process works. Um, again, we went over this last time, but just to cover it again. Really, there's, there's three main things that are encompassed in this application. The first is an expansion to our BLF one, that is phase six. That is going to be set in the, what we call the pressure pocket at the mine site. Um, that's shown on the black and white figure in purple, blue, and green right there. Um, it requires pressure demolition and the plan to, is for this area is to start construction in twenty twenty one and stacking in twenty thirty. This area is not within the view shed. Um, as we can see, the, the area in gray, just adjacent to that, that is the existing BLF facility as you see it today. So the facility expansion is really deep, uh, deep down beyond the surface. And we're planning to fill that up and, uh, basically equal out, uh, the top of the existing BLF one. So your shed should not change. At least sound of this application. Um, the second piece is the mill platform area expansion. So that encompasses BLF two, phase four, that's shown in red and yellow, mainly black and white figure there. Um, it does require mill demolition, as you may recall, uh, we decommissioned the mill in twenty twenty one. Um, and then with meaning to start construction in this area is early twenty twenty six and then stacking in twenty twenty seven. Um, and you'll notice the way the BLFs, uh, the existing BLFs are placed. So the area directly adjacent to the red and yellow is the existing BLF two area. And then the area just south of that is existing BLF one. So what this is going to do is fill that pocket between the two and sort of level. Again, there shouldn't be any view shed impacts to Kipple Creek or Victor with this expansion. Um, but those, that view shed impact analysis will formally be completed as part of the Teller County process.
Do you guys have a, well, not an automation that you are allowed to go to?
Yes. I'll go back to you on that, but off the top of my head, I think it's ten thousand six hundred feet.
Okay.
For the L two.
How close are you to that elevation? Are you guys at that elevation?
Um.
Ten thousand three hundred. That's the elevation of ten foot hill. Ten foot, ten two, I believe.
So there'd be the view shed impact analysis for BLF two expansions or the existing BLF two, as you see it today. Those are completed with amendments eleven, um, and thirteen to the existing areas that are in the view shed. And those existing approved areas will cover up the proposed expansion. They'll, they'll be blocking that view, if that makes sense.
So will that analysis be available at the public hearing?
Yes. Um, so then the last aspect of this is the proposed pit expansions. So, uh, the, the colored figure, the bigger map shown here, um, details those. So there's the Grove Hill expansion, the East Crescent expansion, and the Elkton expansions. The only one that will, will be visible in the view shed is the Grove Hill expansion. Um, and you can see we're not planning to move that pit towards the city at all. It's really just laying that pit back further and deeper. Um, I don't anticipate much of a view shed change there. It will just be a different land form of ground that is already existing. Um, and we're not planning any major changes to the current, um, reclamation plan, which is to backfill the areas that are in the view shed, um, topsoil, put in stormwater controls and then reseed and plant trees. So no changes really proposed with this.
Oh, I see a whole bunch of ore stacking, what about the waste stacking? How's the customer looking as far as space?
Um, I could, I don't know the exact amount of space that we have, but there is not approved waste rock extension with amendment fourteen. Yep. I leave that to the engineers, I just permit what they tell me to do.
Some of the waste be used for landfill? No, it's, it's probably minimal. We actually mining.
Yeah, mom, so can you come to the microphone so that we can do so much?
John, that was John.
Sorry.
Um, oh, some of the waste, because those are his space. Some of the waste, uh, is used as landfill, it just impacts part of the thermal processes. Um, and, um, we currently actually mining a, an old dump uh, that, that was covered up, it used to be a ditch, ditch bed, ditch bed. Um, even Brian had new brains, so that's reason for it to be. So no, no, uh, he, no waste development, I just.
Yeah, and that's a good point that he made. So, uh, like I said, backfilling a lot of the, the view shed, um, angles of those pits that you see today as part of the closure plan, so some of that waste rock will be used to fill in that view shed. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Kate and Rexel, external relations supervisor. Um, although we're Q two community investment, so I just want to make a note, the reason that this is renewed in April, um, we, our CLC holds remains the first month of every quarter. Um, so the date is where I want the second month by the time we come present. But the legacy fund data is not available until end of quarter. So we just keep it aligned, Q one, two, three, and so on and so forth. So we'll have Q three, um, at the next, um, presentation. So that's my applications requesting, um, almost two hundred and nine thousand dollars. We proved mine at those, um, for thirty eight thousand five hundred dollars. And I recognize that's a significant difference. Um, there was one application that was submitted for, um, significant number, seventy five thousand dollars per project that wasn't quite ready to go this year. So we encouraged that organization to apply for something else. Um, something that they could accomplish this year and come back to us next year on this bigger project. Um, so that's why there's such a huge discrepancy on applications received. Um, funding a blessing and then funding approved. And then there was another about thirty thousand, just over thirty thousand dollars that was, um, declined due, due to being out of our impact area. So we're working really hard to bring that back in to Tyler County, um, so. So we're working really hard to bring that back in to Tyler County, um, so. This is just a snapshot of our twenty twenty four year to day community investment. So we've had thirty four applications received asking for over six hundred thousand dollars. Um, we approved eighteen, total one hundred and seven thousand five hundred. And then on the chart, you'll see the numbers different. It's a hundred and seventy two thousand five hundred because that also includes funding that's not managed through the community investment committee. And so that's going to include fifty thousand dollars for the travel limited abandoned mine land program. So that goes to the state, um, well, again, this is the state of Colorado is what I should say. It goes to the travel limited program. Um, also scholarships supporting both Western Park School District and Purple Creek Victor School District, um, in the amount of ten thousand dollars. And that's coming within Tyler County. And then, um, some STEM scholarships and one of five thousand that's counted under, um, Purple Creek Victor School District. Um, and just as an FYI, there is funding and you know this, but, um, there is funding available, um, for students at the Purple Creek Victor School District looking to participate in extrapricular STEM programs or leadership type programs. So, um, if there's students that are interested. Um, so I am the vice chair for the Veterans Business Resource Group. Um, it's a voluntary and full driven organization that focuses on veterans and veteran related organizations um, onsite and throughout the community. Um, with the help of our generous sponsors and our employees, the B R G raised over twelve thousand dollars in July, um, at our first charity golf tournament. Um, money is going to the American Legion first nineteen eighty located in Womack Park. And it's specifically slated for the Tyler County Veteran Trust Fund. And so that money is available to all veteran organizations. So if the American Legion here in Purple Creek has a veteran in need, they can, they can obtain money from that trust fund. So that's why we selected it because it's available to everyone, um, all veterans, excuse me. Um, and then Q two legacy funds, this was from April to June, um, our legacy fund donations totaled forty five thousand five hundred and six dollars. Um, so this, uh, as I was doing my numbers preparing for tonight, um, we've actually, in the last two years, we've increased our employee participation by seventy percent. And we've almost doubled our donations. Two years ago, our journey, our quarterly donations were about twenty three thousand and we're at forty five. So it was about ninety seven percent increase, um, in that. I didn't sign the legacy comments, but I feel like I say it every time I'm here. So, um, is there, oh, sorry. Um, so the Purple Creek District Museum coin donation, we have seven gold and silver. There were some that were mixed. Um, we donated them to the Purple Creek District Museum. You can see them on display now. Um, they commemorate C C and B milestones or achievements. So three million ounces board, four million, five million, and then, um, our custom expansion coin is pictured there. Um, and then additional points for action off and a total of ten thousand four hundred and thirty seven dollars was raised. Um, and we might run that through the legacy fund and those numbers will be reflected in the, in the quarterly presentation. Any questions for me?
Just thank you for everybody who contributed.
Thank you, man. Thank you, council. Thanks for remembering to. Hey, council, just getting over some safety highlights. We have calling instructions to collect. They are just a local contractor that we utilize onsite and we were awarded C C and B through the Newmont CEO Safety. Essentially, um, during their day to day work, they really focus on safety and that's something that we really value onsite. And then to the right, we have, I'm sure with six for mine safety health administration, um, it's pretty similar to OSHA for those that aren't familiar with it. Essentially, they visit at least twice annually and during their most recent visit, they really complimented us on our safety that we have onsite and uh, holding now the state operations to those standards that we have. And then for upcoming community meetings, uh, we have our community open house, which is going to be our closest meeting that we have at the Victor Will Thomas Museum. And then we will also be here again for city council on November sixth. And then this side is kind of similar to what we talked previously. The only thing that we have changed, um, I put the blast hotline on there. For anyone that is interested in calling in, they can know the location and time of the blast or if there's an issue. Updated daily. And that's the only questions.
I want for Katie or John, um, by this time of year, we've already been contacted with sale of water and no one from the mine has contacted the city Purple Creek about water. And we're working on a budget. So are we having water from City Purple Creek tomorrow? Is there someone going to approach us or what?
So at this time, as far as I understand, there's not a need right now, but we certainly can take this number. So if you're offline, if you'd like. Um, and I can get more details from, from folks onsite, um, real closer to the matter, um, and we can talk more about.
I'm going to have a take or pay contract. So if y'all are wanting water, so.
Yep, for sure. I, I can't give you an answer right now, um, but we should talk offline.
Thank you.
Of course. Any other questions?
So.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
All right.
All right, remember that we have, um, discussion items before we move on to new business this evening. So these are items that will be discussed, but there is no vote. Um, so the first discussion item is future text amendments to section two of the development code. Oh, sorry, uh, pertaining to signage standards. Ken.
Yes, um, I want you to come out on the signage personally. Let's look at the overall signs. It's going to be good. Notice that we're even familiar better, in particular, that's temporary banners that came out and small footage, you know, a lot of periods. Uh, a couple of organizations came to us requesting three signs, which is entirely receiving three square foot allowed by per ordinance. And there were some thirty two square foot each. And so we're since we've approved these similar signs in the past, we allow them on this occasion, but we want to review that for the future to see how we want to address that. There's like a housekeeping signs involved in it also. And, uh, one of the things which was not addressed, you know, directly on previous modifications were feather signs. Like that hook over and kind of flip the wind.
Awesome.
And so, uh, we don't, kind of allow signs that move with the wind. So we want to do that. And then with council, we see what direction we're going to take on that. And then there's some further discussion about offsite signs. But we are just creating, coming to on the eighteenth for a work session to discuss the nuances of, of course. Basically, this is just to let you know that we identified these and some of these issues and others that are working forward to we would do a resolution before we were the new ordinance.
So when's that, where's the eighteen?
Uh, the, the schedule for Sept- September eighteen.
Oh, so I was going to say, um, the state team business.
Questions, that's open. Thank you so much.
Okay. Um, second discussion item, um, process for council to consider appointments to H P commission and Mariah.
Hello again. Um, so as a member of our, um, we have a ordinance, uh, particularly, uh, being voted on for, um, the appointment of H P commissioners. Um, we did not write into this ordinance specifically a process for appointment, um, so that council may, um, choose the way in which they do this. Um, in some discussion with, um, Frank and Ken, um, we realized in the past what has been done, um, is that staff actually makes a recommendation to city council about who should be appointed. Um, we kind of thought that's maybe not appropriate, that you all should be the ones to review and make a decision. Um, so we're kind of just asking what, how you'd like to approach that. Um, we have had discussions about possibly, um, sort of an interview process. So if the applicants were to attend city council, so that the, or, um, so the, uh, council can ask, um, the commission, um, questions about, um, why they wish to be on the commission, um, et cetera, um. We could also just look at them, um, on paper and y'all can make a decision on a discussion, um, during the council meeting. Um, or if you'd like to read them ahead of time, um, or your opinions, you know. Um, so you started asking what you'd like to do with that. Um, there are eight applicants this year, um. If this ordinance is to pass, um, tonight, we can have five to seven members with two alternates, um. And so I didn't know if you guys wanted to discuss how many people ahead of time, um, decide how many we'd like to choose. Um, you know, just wanted to give you a heads up before it's actually on the, um, agenda. Um, and other thing I'll mention with that is that, um, this year, uh, when the ordinance passes, we're trying to set up a staggering of terms. Um, so we do have, um, one year term, two year terms and three year terms. This will only exist this year when this is put into place. After that, all, uh, appointments will be three years, um. So council also has a decision, um, to make about who they wish to appoint, to which, uh, chartering. So then just wanted to update you, um, I don't know if we need a decision about how you want to do it tonight, um, or if we just want to keep up discussions. Um, appointments are scheduled to be made at that city council. If we can have a process in place before then, that would be great.
Is it, is it now? Is it five commissioners and two alternates?
Yes, right now we have five commissioners, two alternates. Um, the ordinance allows for two more, um, commissioners if we want to do that. Um, so we could have up to seven commissioners and two alternates.
Uh, if the council were to do the interviews, what would that look like in reverse scheduling?
Did it seem like, I thought before, didn't H P bring these individuals, their recommendations, and then we, you know, we didn't question them?
Yes.
Sure, is that what?
And it's the process we would like to change, um, simply because we don't believe that staff, um, should really have an opinion on, um, applications for a board, um, rather staff bias should not be considered in composition of, of, of this age year.
Well, the H P commission.
Mm-hmm.
It should be a council decision on who gets on the board, not.
You know, I love to, I need to, I need to actually stand up here in front of council and read my little, like, resume and then I was questioning all the members on council.
I would prefer to do interviews.
Uh huh. Go in a public session with them.
Well, that, that's my question. What does that look like?
It would have to be in a, in a.
Yeah, we're going to be a work session.
To be a work session, a third council meeting or on a different day.
Well, because if we have eight applicants, you know, there would be a pretty significant amount of time.
So it's kind of strategic plan.
Yes.
I believe we're all five, you know, it'd be ten.
I have seen, um, under the process, um, in other jurisdictions where they would appoint two members of the council to serve as a committee to conduct the interviews. And when those two go back, their recommendations, if that's easier than trying to find the time to find.
Yeah, it would be easier to coordinate.
It would have to be posted. I don't know. It would be public.
No, two of them.
So I, I think that might be a work.
Yeah, so, so.
The only other thing I would mention is that, um, we could also do, and I, I don't think, I could create this as a staff member, but council could create some kind of review criteria. Right now we don't have any form of evaluation. So we could create some form of evaluation that the council, again, goes out for each applicant, um. It's just another document that would have to be created for we interviews, I suppose, with service.
So you will have some individuals now that are interested and you need to try to get this rule and get them appointed.
I'd like to.
Can you say your goals by the next council meeting?
Those don't have. It's okay. That's y'all's decision.
I was going to say that.
Or if it's carried forward, we just don't have a lot of participation. I guess it's kind of fallen off. So getting the board appointed by council is something we need to work on.
So I think by August twenty first is the peaceful, but I believe that if we coordinate, we could definitely be ready by the first.
Do you want to go that direction? Do two council members want to volunteer for that or?
Who's our number two?
I'm like two, basically. So we're just, when we're going to do this, a bit of time, yeah, I think it'd be done in the afternoon.
So can we?
Yeah, we can do it in the late afternoon, evening, not evening maybe, but about the same four o'clock or something.
Or even Friday. Well, I mean, and I support, I support because you have experience with it. So we're totally different. Um, I can.
I mean, historic reservations near dear to my heart.
Um, I will be willing to be the second one. So we just have to coordinate. On Fridays, we're gentle. Except not the seventeenth and the twentieth. But maybe we can look at the thirtieth or the thirtyth, because that'll, I mean, but that only is the Friday before the next council meeting. Does that give enough time or no?
Well, we put it on the agenda. If y'all have time to interview them, we can have it on that. You'll just have your recommendations ready.
You can find the recommendations and.
It doesn't have to be, but.
Yeah, we can also do.
So they're going to leave it on a Friday and give you the recommendations.
I'm not going to be here on Friday.
So either way, we'll go with two council members doing the interviews and sending the recommendations and then let's.
I can coordinate that. She'll coordinate your dates first and try to set up the interviews.
And I mean, ten, we plan for the appointment at the first meeting in September. So.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, moving on to new business. Agenda item A, consider approval for two housing leases with cabin getaway for the fall shows, beat theater actors, Lauren Smith.
Hello, Mayor Durham and Council. Um, we are requesting approval for two leases for actor and crew housing for the fall shows produced by film and theater company at the Blurt, um, specifically Spandau. Um, we have two leases. One is a short term rental of twenty two days and one is a longer term rental of seven weeks. And, um, the staff recommends approval on these leases.
So, Greg, is this something in this budget or is this?
This budget.
This budget in this hour?
Yes. And this is Zach's replacement.
Yes. Zach will have a look.
It's, uh, currently working part time because, uh, she's still working some of the shows.
Yeah.
So I think she ends on the nineteenth.
Mm-hmm.
And then, uh, sometime we put her on part time to work with Zach to learn what Zach knows, which probably much. Uh, I think we want to start in the middle of September somewhere.
As of right now, yes.
So, so.
And welcome aboard. Thank you so much. I'm happy to be aboard.
So where, when this is in, uh, is it higher on the stage or two three?
Okay.
But we put the, bring in our budget every year now to lift the housing. Are we still, are we still doing, uh, the one of Thurlow?
Yeah, so these are the, in addition to Thurlow and the Beck and, um, the, the house on this, this night, it's well.
So what's the total number of casting crew?
So the total will be, I think, is max twenty one people, um. The, it's fourteen actors and then add in stage management, um, producer, music director, so, um, uh, choreographer, and then choreographer, technical directors, more of those temporary members. Maximum will be twenty one, but then what's the show except the money? I believe maximum sixteen, sixteen or seventeen.
Well, any questions?
So happy to get someone to say. Have some questions, but.
All right, um, if the listeners need for the questions or discussion, can I get a motion, please?
What motion? We approve housing for two leases with cabin literary for fall shows in the theater. Um, do you need to say the addresses now? We don't have to, okay. I'll say.
All right, vote please.
Councilor.
Yes.
Twenty percent round.
Yes.
Twenty twelve.
Yes.
Captain Bowman.
Yes.
Mayor Durham.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, council. Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item B, consider approval of Colorado pump service and supply quote for rehabbing well number two, along with the new pump and motor, right?
Most matter, council, uh, well, two has been out for a while, um. It got, I guess, I don't think it struck by lightning, but probably the motor was burned. So we had company come in and pull the pump and while the pump and motor was out, we thought we would camera. We do have that. We do have the camera, if you want to see downpour of well number two. But thirty four thousand includes fifteen thousand approximately, I think it's in here of actually cleaning the well. There's a screen at the bottom and there is iron in our water, uh, and the screen plugs over time. So fifteen thousand of thirty fours for them to come in and clean the well. And there's also debris. When they do that, there'll be debris in the bottom. Clean the well and there's also debris when they do that, there'll be debris in the bottom of the well and they'll get that out. And then we're gonna set an all-new pump, motor, pipe, uh. Electrical, everything's gonna be new going back down into number two. That's been our priority well for a long time. Uh, number four is basically not working anymore. They tried cleaning the well, this is actually going, the camera going. It's number two, you, you already at forty-two feet. There you go. The casing uh is in good shape, the pipe itself that holds the pump, the water comes back up through. Is corroded, so they're recommending we replace all of that, so all of that adds up to the thirty-four. Uh, that's your water level sitting at six point eight feet. This well is uh two-up flies. Think the well total is, we'll see it here, I think it's sixty feet or something, so your water level's standing.
This is what we need to be done for.
And over time, uh, of course, the pump wears, but the, the filter or the uh. Screen plugs over time and we lose more and more capacity. People saying this well is pumping about a hundred and eighteen gallons a minute. Uh, number four was down to eighteen gallons a minute, so. What we're looking at now is trying to find a new company or a drilling company that'll come in and drill, there's your screen. We'll, we'll re-drill number four. Of course, we gotta go through the permitting with the state, everything to get number four re-drilled. The pump motor and everything in number four is good, we think we could just move it over once the well is drilled. The problem, we can't find anybody that'll come to Crystal Creek and drill a well. That's our problem right now. The companies we've contacted, they're a little bit apart, but we won't come to. Our number's just as good, but.
We can't use residential well companies for it.
The facility like Black Mountain is, is permitted to ninety-nine gallons a minute. And they're not permitted over a hundred gallons a minute, so they can't drill the well. So, of course, I've told the guys to, I'm getting this online now, people, I'm telling them, well, that's only producing eighteen gallons a minute. So they can come join the well for us at eighteen gallons a minute. I don't, we're trying to find somebody to re-drill number four. But anyway, so it's recommend. The resourcing of well number two and new pump over thirty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-five.
So I'm assuming that, is there any way to go clean those screens, Frank, or, I mean, you can't pull them out of there, I'm assuming, but you, is there any way to clean them?
That's what they're gonna do.
But once it's done, I mean, later on down the line.
Yeah, you can't even put the pump in, so you, the motor, everything's gotta be pulled out. It's only about twenty, I think in here it's twenty-two hundred, now, well, that was then, uh. That was then actually coming mobilizing. Yeah, remove the pump motor valve, it was twenty-six hundred, mobilization was two thousand, so. We're looking at twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars for them to come up here and pull it. But then it was fifteen thousand thirteen dollars to re-add the well, so that's.
I think that's why the problem is the screens and.
To keep it clean. Mickey thinks that on number four, what happened is the well set, it wasn't used, and so it eventually just. And you couldn't get water and they tried to clean it, they tried to, he told me everything they tried to do to get it, it couldn't really work. So re-drilling four is probably the only option. But, yeah, over time, you probably need to, well, we think if we get four working, we need to alternate. We need to go early on and, you know, keep switching back and forth.
So we still, we have no idea what it takes to get it up rolling.
They're trying to re, re-drill and re-drill, because you gotta go through permitting, which is both through the Department of Health. And through C D P H E. You gotta get permits for both of them. One is to drill the well and one's because you're using drinking water, so both have to be permitted. So we first gotta get, find a real driller and then find somebody that'll take us through the permitting process with the state. And then re-drill the well and then, of course, pump it all back in, because we're gonna remove the site. So all of the pump, the building and everything that's there, we can reuse. We just have to step out so many feet, I don't know how many feet that is, away from the existing well. To drill a new one, so we don't know that till we get into the process, but we're still looking for somebody to drill there. So, when we have a new uh plant operator. Just, the director of plant operations is starting next Tuesday. So hopefully Jonathan brings experience with that and can help us.
And I'm just, so is there a warranty?
I was kinda wondering that too, I would, that'd be nice, but I don't have that in front of me. Yeah, I'm sure the, the pump and the motor will carry a warrant. Well, this isn't costing money, there's no rain or anything. You gotta have.
The problem we've had uh from, this has been out now about three months. The problem we've had is the water now we're getting, which is plenty of it, is from the reservoirs, and when you have snow melt and you have these rain events. You get, the reservoirs are kind of turned up. And so when that water hits the plant, it costs us a lot more money to treat that water, to get everything out of the turbidity, out of the water. To be able to provide to citizens. So the well doesn't have all of that turbidity, so it would be saving some money there, we'd be saving money on chemical costs.
Then the man who's coming from the.
Any, are you, are you saying, I miss you?
We've done all the bases.
Under a manuscript.
The materials are low and the manufacturer's low. What is going to happen?
So we better pay them for the interviews.
Well, the boss, but.
Well, yeah.
Okay, so right now what happens is council approves this tonight, we send it to them tomorrow, they start to order all the parts. So it's probably a couple of weeks out before they can actually mobilize to. Clean the well and then put everything back together.
Do you know what the turn time is on that once they start the work?
Uh, I don't know how long it's gonna take to clean the well, that's what I, putting the well, putting that in doesn't take that long, but cleaning the well, I don't know.
Yeah, hopefully they can get them up here and. It's kind of hard, where do they have a puzzle?
Same, no, that's a, that's a.
Any other questions or discussion?
Uh, make a motion that we approve the car to pump service supply quote to rehablet, I'll second.
Vote please.
Yes. Yes.
Agenda item C, consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, adopting a stage one fire ban. Um, and she is.
I don't know if you has any, you could tell if any questions or, I know people are probably saying, well, it's raining outside, about it, being fire ban. Uh, doesn't take, we had a, a lot of growth this year because of the snow that we had, a lot of moisture we've had, so we have a lot of growth out there. The county issued the fire ban week or so down this first, and what we normally do is follow the, whatever the county adopts, we try to. It's easier to, if you have all the citizens kind of on the same plan, so I think that was the chief's. Concern is, is that we just follow the county and they're in their plan, they started August first. And so that's, and I think you wrote a e- an email I forwarded to you all this morning, kind of that same, his thoughts.
And one of those citizens that is like, yeah, it's raining, why do we need this? But on the other side of that, they know the actual humidity and moisture and combustibles.
It's take long for this, the grass and stuff to dry out.
Right, so even if you're being on the same page as the county is, we're doing it, so. As much as it annoys me.
While fires are concerned, so. Any other questions? Can I get a motion, please?
So, you, you want to number twenty-three, twenty-three dash sixteen?
Second.
Vote please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, agenda item D, consider approval of a Dallas Strong Communities Grant Agreement for one hundred and ten thousand dollars, ten.
What's going on, John, right, so, um, this is uh for Dallas Strong Communities. And that's to hire a, a consultant to manage the economic development tourism. Branding plan and a comprehensive plan strategy. Uh, it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars in total, we got a eleven thousand dollar match. There from the city, one million thousand dollar uh contribution from the state. Thirty-five thousand that will go to the uh comprehensive plan, and seventy-five thousand that will go to. Concerned to manage that effort, we anticipate, uh. We actually have a signed contract from Green Line, and we'll be bringing that to you next council meeting for approval to move forward with that. Along with the economic development. Tourism grant and comprehensive plan, that's Kimmy Horn will negotiate with that, and hopefully we'll have that for your next council meeting as well.
So, you better, right?
I'm excited.
I was, you know, I was together.
Just so the community knows that towards, we have a hundred thousand from. Uh, building and matches, dollar is always fifty-fifty, so you have to put up a fifty-fifty match, uh, and so. Uh, Full House Resorts put up the hundred thousand dollar match, that's why we have two certain well. The economic development tourism strategy is actually part of the comprehensive plan, they just asked that. That be focused on first, so we can move forward on economic development tourism. As the comp plan is getting put together, normally the comprehensive plan takes about a year to do and. I think the information we got from Kimmy Horn's, the economic development tourism strategy should last about four months, three to four months. And that was what Full House Resorts was requesting, we'd move on it soon. So we could get something going as far as economic development and tourism. So out of that three hundred and ten thousand, the city's only putting up eleven thousand dollars for an updated comprehensive plan. Which is.
I just want to stress again that community um involvement will be, you have some of that application. Um, those opportunities will be available.
Thank you, Mayor, I want to comment on that. There's been rumors around town where. Full House Resorts is supporting up to a hundred thousand is going to tell us what the economic development tourism strategy is, that's not true. There could be a law, but we need the public to show up for these meetings and have your input. Including the other casinos, it's not just Full House. Full House understands that, it's for the community to put together this policy, this strategy. And so we need people to show up for those meetings, thank you.
Yes, and that will be going out the mail.
Yes.
All right, any further discussion or questions? All right, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve the Dallas Strong Communities Grant Agreement for a hundred and ten thousand dollars, I'll second.
Vote please.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes, yes. All right, agenda item E, second reading in public hearing to about the ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero five. Chapter two, article seven of the Crystal Creek Municipal Code relating to members of the Historic Preservation Commission.
Hello, council, um. So you're reading of this ordinance, um. Can we go over it? Um, I think the last time, I just reminded the community, um, and this. Ordinance is, um, just to do a little bit of housekeeping, to clarify some rules and regulations for. Um, how we appoint or who is allowed to be appointed to our H P commission. Um, and so the preservation commission, um, uh, exists um to regulate um the historic buildings in. The um city of Crystal Creek, um, obviously this is in tandem with um the historic gaming tax. Um, so we want to make sure that we update these and really, um, you know, set up a good policy on them. So this is just to clarify what we had before, it does eliminate a residential um policy. Previously, only people who owned property um in the city of Crystal Creek or resided permanently in the city of Crystal Creek could apply. Um, this changes that, um, and also again, just clarifies, um. Some things, it separates it from the planning commission, um, which council is currently acting as. Um, so basically just creating its own document and redefining some rules and regulations. Thank you.
So do you wanna, do you wanna keep it five, five or seven number members, or do you wanna make it five members or seven, you want it, either one?
Um, I think five or seven is fine, um, simply because if we had seven voices, really though. I think honestly, with the sort of reservation with the barrier, um, it's definitely something that, um, is. Has a lot of strong opinions, so I think the more voices from our community that we can hear at a time is great, um. That being said, if we can't find seven people to volunteer at a time, I think it's good to have five, so.
Um, so this is a public hearing, so we're open up to public comment at this time. All right, at this time, we will open up to what we're actually doing, just to simply say if there are any public comments. If there are any public comments, then.
Anybody that'll sign up?
All right, being that there is no comment, I will close. All right, any further questions, discussion with council? All right, can I get a motion, please? Vote please.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay, at this time, I knew that we go into executive session, do I need to read the garbage? Right, executive session pursuant to Colorado Vice Statutes twenty-four dash six dash four zero two four one subsection E. To determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies with negotiations, and instructing the negotiators. And two subsection E for a conference with legal counsel for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions related to pending regulations. Um, so at this time, everyone just, oh, can I get a second? All right, vote please.
House of Bellman?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So everyone will need to exit the room at this time, once executive session is completed, people return, um, by renewing agenda ID.